Alderman meeting for Monday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty, six thirty. Roll call, please, Terry.
Alderman Stevens, here. Alderman Hudson.
Here.
Alderman Motley. Alderman Wilkins. Alderman Rogers. He's here. Alderman Rogers.
President.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah. Okay, we can have a forum then. If everybody could rise and do a quick leave, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the consent agenda, which could be approved as a group unless we need to separate by request by one of the Alderman team. A, we have minutes of prior meetings of the Board of Aldermen of June twenty-third, twenty twenty, and July twentieth, twenty twenty. Minutes of public courts and public utilities, July thirteenth, twenty twenty, or August tenth, twenty twenty. Minutes of the General Government and Public Safety Committee meeting, July thirteenth, twenty twenty, and August tenth, twenty twenty. Minutes of plan zoning committee, July twentieth. And then we have the reports of the financial statements of June twenty twenty and July twenty twenty. Treasurers and collectors reports and activity reports.
Will we accept the consent agenda as is?
Second.
And first, now I have a second one, Mr. Rogers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Loses the count payable over twelve fifty equals six hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Page one hundred and seventeen.
One hundred and seventeen, thank you, sir.
Move to accept the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred fifty dollars for a grand total of six hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Rogers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Count payable passes. Now, we have a public hearing that's scheduled for certain tax rates for twenty twenty. Any comments needed?
The notice of the public hearing was published in the August fifth edition of the Centraria, Centraria Virus Guard. Same information that was published in the guard was listed in the memo on, in your packet, and also on that page right after the accounts payable over twelve fifty on the public notice. Tax rates, the share are not set to change.
Okay.
We briefly touched on this last committee, but if you have questions, please tell me.
Okay. So, at this time, we take, so, does there anybody speak about the public hearing and all the tax taxes?
I object to taxes.
I think that's a pretty general statement that rings pretty close. So, with nothing more to matter, I'll close the public hearings, set the tax rates for twenty twenty, which are not changing. Now, were comments from citizens? Do we have any comments from the citizens?
Yes. A few years ago, Centraria adopted a revised comprehensive plan. This plan includes a major street plan, which is on page forty-eight of the comprehensive plan. On page forty-seven, four types of streets are classified. Orterial streets are state highways, which move high volumes of traffic between, to and from a chase of cities. Many of the sub-arterial streets, such as Galloway Chance, Drive, Jefferson Street, Signalton Street, North Alabama Street, Switchland Street, used to be state highways. These are intended also to move high volumes of traffic, but more than traffic within the city. Collector streets move traffic within the city and funnel traffic from residential, which are local streets, to larger streets. Finally, residential streets provide direct access to homes. As you can tell, different types of streets serve different purposes. I'm here to talk about the proposed speed limit ordinance. City controls the speed limits on everything except arterial streets. The ordinance changes all speed limits in Centraria to twenty-five miles per hour. This is supposedly done to make the speed limit in Centraria uniform. However, speed limits are not, are about safety, not uniformity. High-volume streets typically have wider rideways to keep faster, higher-volume traffic away from pedestrians, which is a safety feature. Local streets have more people walking and kids playing, where the reduced speed limit is an important safety measure. If speed limits are unreasonably low, drivers will ignore them. Limit choices either to write more tickets or ignore the speeding. If enforcement has ignored, people tend to ignore the unrealistically low speed limits, which leads to ignoring speed limits elsewhere, such as around schools and on residential streets, creating a real safety problem. Writing more tickets will take up more of the police department's time, as well as that of the city prosecutor. Do we have the manpower to enforce these lower speed limits? And I've been told no. Also, the state's put a cap on the percentage of city budget that can come from ordinance violations. The closer the city is to reaching the cap, the more stringent the reporting requirements, taking up more staff time. And writing more tickets will upset more people, making them less inclined to help police in other ways. Is that a good idea? A few years ago, the police in Alderman spent time trying to start a new neighborhood watch program, and I know I spent some time out with the police doing that. Do we want to upset those people and get less cooperation? There will, these will be the unintended consequences of this, of this action. Let's look at speed limits as a safety issue instead of a uniformity issue. This ordinance looks at speed limits as if the only tool in your toolbox is a hammer and bi- valley, you're going to fix everything with your hammer. There are different speed limits on different types of streets for a reason, but this ordinance ignores that. When this was brought up, I don't think anyone thought about the consequences of this. Maybe it's time you did. Finally, there is one change to the speed limits that I would like to see, and that is to raise the speed limits in school zones at times when children are not present. Therefore, there is no safety issue. All of our schools are located on either sub-arterial streets or collector streets. At six o'clock in the morning or six o'clock in the evening, there are generally no children around the schools. Why is the speed limit only twenty miles per hour? Both the intermediate school and the high school are sent well back from the street with parking lots between the street and the buildings. At the elementary school, the fence-long length view prevents direct access from the playground. Why not have school speed limits of twenty miles per hour and a regular speed limit for days and times when they're in high school and session?
A question I'd ask you, you, you mentioned that you were informed that we didn't have time to enforce the tickets, extra tickets. Was that by the police department?
Yes.
It wasn't by me.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you. So, what's your take on that? I mean, do you feel that, what, what impact do you, you know, in answering that statement, I'd like to, I'd like to hear it.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We redid the ordinance, and it's not all streets are twenty-five mile an hour.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's true.
Because there are some that are remaining where they're at, or whatever. We have a difficult time responding to all the speeding components. But what we've done is, as you know, you know, you set up radar trail, and you set up, and you get, you get data, and you look at the data, and you find out, okay, is speeding really a problem? I think we can say that a small problem on Jefferson Street, okay? But the data that was provided off the length view says, no, there was not a problem. Am I correct?
That's what.
That's what the data said.
That's what the.
That's what the data said.
Right.
Okay. So, we write a lot of speeding data. We did. I mean, that's, that's just the way, that's just the nature of the business. Now, can I say that we're going to go out and enforce every street that has, no, I don't have the answers for all of that, but the fact is, we're going to get some of them. You know, and I think it's an education thing. I think the first six months or whatever is an education thing. Hey, you know, we changed the speed limit on this road. You know, and do we have a huge speeding problem this time? No, I don't believe we have a huge speeding problem. We do have some. Now, if Kerry was here, she would, she would agree with me on this. The school times, when school is in session, the kids are running and everything else, yes, it's a younger generation, yes, they're in a hurry to get someplace. But that's, yeah, an education thing. And usually you write one or two on a ticket, and it'll usually slow the rest of them down for a while. So, all in all, to answer your question, give you a short answer, is we can handle it.
Okay. You don't, because I mean, you're going to patrol, as you patrol, and as you patrol, you're going to look for violations in general.
Right. You're going to look for violations of any speeding stuff, just like we do everywhere else. Right.
And he is right, there was a change, just, you know, they're not all going to be twenty-five, or it was changed.
Right. Right, it was, it was broken down, and I, but I read it at the end of the day, I mean.
It seemed reasonable at that point, because that was, part of the pushback is what you talked about in, in your points, Don. And so, that's where I kind of got, that's one way to show we're on the same page with what we're hearing and what we're thinking here, right? It seems like that trailer thing, I mean, do we rent that thing or borrow it, or how does that work?
It's something about Moon County Sheriff's Department, and we're trying to figure out if there's a grant out there. I talked to the guys in Sheriff's Department, this name, because that's the data that happened.
Well, it's great, I thought the diagnostic data, the analytics you could get from it were pretty impressive.
Yeah.
And it gets it from both sides, you said.
Right.
And I didn't realize it did that. And it's also deterrent.
Right.
It's saying there, I don't, no matter where I'm at in the United States, I see that thing flash, and I immediately look to see how fast I'm going, because there are states, if that thing can take the damn picture, and it'll send you a ticket, trust me.
It's true.
I've had that happen. I got it changed to parking, not moving my legs, but I paid a two hundred and twenty-three dollar. So, that being said, I would, I'd like for us to consider in future, I mean, is it reasonable for us to be able to get one of those to help ourselves to move around?
Well, and, and that's, that's.
I don't know what the cost of one of those is, so.
We'll talk about that, because I think, I think there's some grants out there, such as, and like I said, I just haven't.
Any other?
I, I'd like to say something about the school zones. The elementary school and CIS, I take a lot of evening walks, and there are kids going to CES to play on those playgrounds all the time. And in front of CIS, you have the rec center, you have the park, you have the skate park. My, I let my ten-year-old go to the skate park with his friends. So, I like that our speed limits are still school zoned in front of those hot places for children to go. No matter, I mean, the kids are going to go to the rec at four, or five, or six, or the park at four, you know. So, I agree with.
Well, they seem to have events too, in evening too, at, at the schools, you know, as well.
I can't believe I'm saying this, because I, I don't like.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm right with him most of the time, but the other day, I went by the middle school, and this young man, I almost stopped. He did everything he was supposed to, he went to the, it was just a weird time, it was July middle, nothing was going on. Went to the crosswalk and waited like he's supposed to. So, I stopped to let him go, and another car went zooming by. And I'm thinking, come on, but that kid was doing everything he was supposed to do and what he's been taught to do. They don't know the difference.
Right.
And we can go twenty mile an hour, and we don't want what happened in Columbia to happen in Centraria. So, I can't believe I'm saying that, Don, but I'll be the first one to get the ticket now.
But I, I go by the intermediate school all the time, and ninety percent of the time, when I go by there, there's nobody out walking.
It's just, you mean in the school zones?
Yes.
They do. They do.
Here's, here's what I would say about the twenty mile an hour. Let's just say twenty mile an hour length view. For those that don't know, it is twenty mile an hour all the time, but it's not always designated a school zone. Because after four-thirty in the afternoon, it's no longer a school zone, unless there's a debate going on. So, the fact is, is when someone's earned a ticket for a school zone, it's during school hours, and yes, there's an extra twenty-five dollars tacked on to it, but if it's after the hours, they're just written for a regular speeding ticket. Do I think we need to change it? No, because I, I will, I will agree with Don, and the fact is, is part of not having a radar gun, the fact is, I, I sit here on Rhodamire, and I watch this guy go down in front of CBMS, and it just shocked, I did stop the guy, because I didn't know how fast he was going, but I could run a ticket for Carisman Burton. So, I didn't. It's an education thing. These kids are out all the time now. I mean, especially as, as we go on, you know, power law school will be in session and everything else, but, so, the fact is, I, I don't think there should be a change there. Just my opinion.
Any other thoughts, any other comments from citizens? With that being said, I'll close the comments from the citizens. We will move now to action agenda. And the first one's finance, it's fixing the annual rate of taxation in Centraria for taxpayer twenty twenty, for general revenue purposes. I'm going to have Heather, if you would read those, Heather, to us, citizen. Oh, she's going to do that?
Just the last, the last one.
Oh, she's going to read them, we're not starting there though now.
No.
I'll, I'll read the.
You're excited about it.
I've got six to go, six or seven to go.
Okay, we've got six to do, but she's going to read them. So, I would take a, entertain a motion for the first reading.
Bill number?
Twenty-three seventy.
Will the bill number twenty-three seven zero begin its first reading by title only?
Second.
I have a second for Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of taxation in the city of Centraria, Missouri, for the year twenty twenty, for general revenue purposes, for maintenance and support of the library, and for establishing and maintaining free public parks.
Will the bill number two-three-seven-zero begin its second reading by title only?
My second.
I'll say Christina, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of taxation in the city of Centraria, Missouri, for the year twenty twenty, for general revenue purposes, for maintain, maintenance and support of the library, and for establishing and maintaining free public parks.
Will the bill number two-three-seven-zero be adopted by roll call vote?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Roll call, vote please, Terry.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Okay, bill number two-three-zero-seven passes, ordinance number, please.
Three-zero-six-seven.
Okay, that moves us now from finance down to legal. I'm amending section twenty-six dash one-on-one, point one of the city code concerning automatic payment for utility customers. Bill number will be, what, ordinance?
Two-three-seven-one.
Two-three-seven-one, okay, I would entertain a motion for first reading.
Make a motion that bill number two-three-seven-one be given its first reading by title only?
My second.
Second for Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance amending section twenty-six, one-eleven, point one, subsection A of the Centraria city code concerning automatic payment withdrawal program for utility customers with, with the city of Centraria, Missouri.
Will the bill number two-three-seven-one be given its second reading by title only?
Second.
I'll say, Mr. Rogers first, so it's Christina, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance amending section twenty-six dot one-eleven dot one, subsection A of the Centraria city code concerning automatic payment withdrawal program for utility customers of the city of Centraria, Missouri.
Will the bill number two-three-seven-one be adopted by roll call vote?
Second.
And first, a second by Alderman Hudson, roll call, vote please, Terry.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
It passes, ordinance number, please, Terry.
Three-zero-six-eight.
All right, moves us to number two, amend section eighteen, there's a search rate of the city code concerning speed limits within the city limits ordinance. I entertain the motion for first reading of the bill number.
Two-three-seven-two.
Will the bill number two-three-seven-two be given its first reading by title only?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rogers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance to amend Centraria city code section eighteen dash thirty-three concerning speed limits to lower the speed limit on several streets in the city of Centraria, Missouri.
Will the bill number two-three-seven-two be given its second reading by title only?
Aye.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance to amend Centraria city code section eighteen dash thirty-three concerning speed limits to lower the speed limit on several streets in the city of Centraria, Missouri.
Will the bill number two-three-seven-two be adopted by roll call vote?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Magley, roll call, vote, Terry, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Bill number two-three-seven-two passes, ordinance number?
Three-zero-six-nine.
Puts us to three, imposing a ta, a use tax for general revenue purposes at a rate of two-and-a-half percent. Do we, do we need to discuss this at all, or not? I mean, it's, it's important that we understand for educational purposes, because we found from Macon, and we heard from Sidney, that one of the biggest problems we have when it comes to this, this use tax is the education of the voting public, because they think it's an extra tax that's being added, okay? That's the main thing, they think that they're voting for an additional tax, that's not the case. If you look at what she's provided, and she'll tell you a little bit about it, it, it's a huge number compared to what I thought it would be that we missed out on. And I'm sure twenty twenty, because of the virus and people ordering so much stuff online and out of state, has been incredibly larger than what twenty nineteen was. So, I'm going to let you tell us a little bit about that, because I think it's important that we're educated within our wards and within our city to get this voted in. I think it's important that we don't miss out on this tax revenue. It also allows for a little bit more of a fair playing field for some businesses. I would challenge that, you know, if it's over a certain amount, you can save a lot of money, and it becomes hard to shop local for some people. But other than that, there's, there's real positives and really no negatives to it all. It's crazy for us not to be getting the money, but I'll let you talk a little bit about it.
There are two parts to the use tax. The first part, the city of Centraria's already taken care of it, it had to do with out-of-state vehicle sales. Someone previously purchased a state, a vehicle out of state, they did not have to pay our local sales tax on that vehicle. But we passed an ordinance, and I want to say maybe back in two thousand and twelve, might have been thirteen.
Much later than that.
You think it was later?
Yes, it was only a few years ago.
Okay, but we did pass that ordinance, so we are collecting sales tax on out-of-state vehicle purchases. So, that part is already taken care of. The other part is the use tax, and this is not an additional tax, you're not going to pay a use tax and a sales tax, you're going to pay one or the other. And this is for your e-commerce purchases, your Amazon purchases and things like that. So, the state of Missouri are, already imposes the four-point-two-two-five percent tax. So, you might notice that on some purchases that you're paying it, and some purchases you're not. This would allow the city of Centraria to impose our two-and-a-half percent sales tax on those same purchases. And it's just purchased, it, it's taxes on the purchase of goods by Missouri residents from out-of-state vendors. It, the tax, see, the use tax is applied to the same type of products, subject to traditional sales tax. But you're not going to go to a brick-and-mortar store here and pay a sales tax and a use tax, you're just going to pay sales tax. But if you're shopping online, you could pay a use tax, and you may be, you may not, it's, it's going to depend.
Who monitors that?
Department of Revenue.
When they collect that. Purchases you do online, they monitor what you purchase online?
Like, for instance, Amazon, in some jurisdictions, they're already collecting local sales tax rates. I, I know this for a couple of my communities, we've seen it when we were considering passing a use tax. And Amazon provides reports, I don't know if it's every six months or quarterly.
To them?
To the Department of Revenue, and some larger retailers, I'm just picking on Amazon, because I.
Do they all do, and I know Amazon does that too.
Honestly, I, I don't know, the, the traditional example has largely been Amazon people use. I assume, I hate to assume, but I assume that other retailers are doing it, they provide, you know, an audited amount for them to take a look at to see if the taxes are being collected appropriately.
The state's going to collect this four-point-two-two-five.
I guess, I reason at one time, it was up to the, the people to turn in reports. So, there, you're going to get some unjustly reports. Some people are going to be on it, some people aren't, but what you're saying is, it's the internal IRS is going to say, this is what you, so everybody should be, hopefully. So, that's where we're headed.
And what it says is, and this is, if anybody, anybody that attended the MNL meeting in Mexico, it was the last one.
Yeah, Don was there too.
Pre-COVID. Yeah, Don was there. Actually, Don brought up the use tax before. So, interestingly enough, I pulled the numbers today from the twenty nineteen use tax rates. This is what we could have potentially collected in twenty nineteen for use tax, and I, I, that you can pick different things from the drop-down box, you can do sales and use, or use only, or sales only, I did use only. And we could have potentially collected an additional almost one-hundred and six thousand dollars in use tax.
For last year only?
For twenty nineteen.
Well, you know, so twenty twenty, you know, it's got to be a huge number compared to that, I mean, actually.
You've got to realize, you asked whether everybody, all the retailers are doing it. The, the federal government had set it up, it was basically a Supreme Court opinion, I believe, that.
Way fair, you're correct.
That said that they had to have a nexus with Missouri, and they had to have a presence in Missouri before you could collect tax on them. They've thrown that out. So, now you don't have to have a presence in Missouri, but unless, the way our state laws are set up, unless there's a use tax in place, you cannot collect it.
Well, you know, the other thing that's going to happen too is, brick-and-mortar businesses are going to start to vanish more and more. And as that happens, it's going to be e-commerce that's going on. You're going to be buying online more, whether we like it or not, in a lot of instances, right? So, if you're one of two-hundred-and-fifty J.C. Pennies, or five-hundred J.C. Pennies nationwide to get clothes, you may not be able to go there, but you may still want to buy a certain style shoe or whatever from J.C. Penny. You're going to have to do that as e-commerce, and if it comes out of, out of state, then we would be missing out on that revenue that we. Missouri, so Missouri's going to collect the four-point-two-two-five. If we pass the use tax, they're going to pass, they're going to, they're going to collect six-point-seven-two-five, and two-and-a-half, and that's ours, and they keep their four-point-two-two-five. So, they're collecting it for them already.
They're going to get it anyway, we're not going to get it.
Yeah, so we're just, we're just getting, they're just going to ask for more.
I mean, a hundred and six thousand dollars sounds like a lot. Imagine what that is in Columbia, it's, it's hugely affecting their budget.
But you know, you figure five years, at a hundred thousand dollars, it's a half million dollars in revenue.
Half a million dollars.
Yeah.
A lot, you can do with that.
But just based on somebody getting reports saying, this is what you spent, and this is what you, and that's.
No, those transactions are.
Those transactions.
Those transactions.
The transactions happen automatically. It'd be a nightmare.
It's, what's in the box that you tax, it has your state, it already does it right on your invoice. Because I paid four-point-two-two-five from Amazon today. It's on there, it's four-point-two-two-five, it's not six-point-seven-two-five, because we're not, we're not on the use, we haven't passed it. So, it would be showing the, the six-point-seven-two-five, it might break it out four-point-two-two-five, and the other be two-point-five, but it'll be on there.
Assuming we pass this tonight, so it gets on the ballot, we need to get something to all the businesses to get them to help promote it.
Right.
Right.
So, I have, I have some shared resources from other cities, some PowerPoint programs, we could have town hall meeting, those aren't always very well-attended. But pushing out information on Facebook is going to be really essential, I think. And one, the city of Macon did a kind of a, it's kind of a cartoon, and David Wilkins has already agreed to narrate our cartoon.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Yeah, and I have the software to do that, so, so we can get that going. But it's, it's very insightful, and it does say that you will not pay both a use tax and a sales tax. And it goes to, for things like, you know, the streets that these delivery drivers are going to drive on to deliver your product, and, you know, things like that, so.
It, and there's, there's some good templates that we can use, for like the newspaper, local newspapers put in there to explain, somebody reads it point by point. What is the use tax? What does it mean for me? What, what does it cost me extra? Nothing, and you put in there, and you're able to walk them through the fact and put them more easily, that it's not another tax to do a thing. You pay one or the other.
You, you should reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, because it is in their best interest for this.
Absolutely, sure, absolutely. So, any more discussion on adopting the, I just thought it was important, and we understand that we're going to have to help educate this thing. Because the reason it has, it failed three times in Macon, he said, because people just thought they were adding another tax on top of the tax already, and that was not the case. He said, when they finally, duh, figured out that they needed to educate the people.
Has the county played one up for this one?
Just what?
Use tax?
I think, does, Boone County doesn't have a use tax?
No, they, they put it up, and it failed.
Yeah, I don't know.
See, I'm sure it boils down to the fact that people think they're taxing themselves more.
Yes, I mean, the county didn't do a lot with advertising, and they just thought it would pass.
So, for us, it's a good thing.
What they had originally recommended, the county was recommending, is that all of the cities do it at the same time as the county did it, because they would all benefit each other. because they would all benefit each other.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion of bill number two three seven three.
I move that bill number two three seven three be given its first reading by title only.
Right.
Second by Mr. Rogers. All in favor? Opposed.
An ordinance of the city of Centaria, Missouri, imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at a red, at a rate of two and one half percent for the privilege of storing, using, or consuming within the city any article of tangible personal property pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of sections one forty-four dot six hundred through one forty-four dot seven sixty-one R S M O, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city's sales taxes repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on November third, twenty twenty.
I move that bill number two three seven three be given its second reading by title only.
Right.
Mr. Magley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's hear that again. How about that?
An ordinance of the city of Centaria, Missouri, imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at a rate of two and one half percent for the privilege of storing, using, or consuming within the city any article of tangible personal property pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of sections one forty-four dot six hundred through one forty-four dot seven sixty-one R S M O, providing for the, providing the, for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city's sales taxes repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on November third, twenty twenty.
Move that bill number two three seven three be adopted by roll call vote.
Right.
Now, first and second, roll call, Voltaire.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Bill number two three seven three passes ordinance number?
Three zero seven zero.
Okay. I've read books that have less reading than that. Well, thank you. Uh, moves us down to four, adopting Boone County Hazard Mitigation Plan of twenty twenty, the resolution. Any discussion needed? Anybody? Then I would accept a motion for the first and only reading of the resolution.
I move that bill number two three seven four begin its first reading by title only.
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
A resolution of the city of Centaria, Missouri, to adopt the Boone County Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty.
Move that bill number two three seven four be adopted by roll call vote.
Right.
Now, the first and second, roll call, Voltaire, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
The bill number two three seven four passes. That'd be resolution number three zero seven one, if you're correct.
R zero two zero dash one four.
All right. That moves us to five. A minute of city code concerning the cost of internet, uh, internet intermittent permit fees. At the.
Termin.
Yeah, intermittent fees at the cemetery. So.
I thought it was intermittent too. I looked at that.
Well, I look like.
That would be a lot.
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda, there's been some odds that go on in our city. I'll take a motion, the first reading of bill number?
Two three seven five.
Move that bill number two three seven five be given its first reading by title only.
First and second, Mr. Magley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance to amend section six dash one of the Centaria city code concerning the cost of intermittent permits.
Move that bill number two three seven five be given its second reading by title only.
Now, first and second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance to amend section six dash one of the city of Centaria code concerning the cost of intermittent permits.
Move that bill number two three seven five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. Roll call vote, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Bill number two three seven five passes, the ordinance number three zero seven one. Okay. Number six, accepting the dedication, uh, dedication of utility easement across east side of eight twelve Countryland Drive. I would entertain a motion for the first reading.
I move that bill number two three seven six begin its first reading by title only.
Second.
Now, second from Mr. Hudson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of utility easement across the east side of eight twelve Countryland Drive.
Move that bill number two three seven six begin its second reading by title only.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hudson. Go ahead.
An ordinance.
No, no. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An, an ordinance accepting the dedication of utility easement across the east side of eight twelve Countryland Drive.
Move that bill number two three seven six be adopted by roll, roll call vote.
Second.
First and second, roll call, Voltaire, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Stevens?
Yep.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Okay, bill number two three seven six passes, so that'd be ordinance number three zero seven two. Is that correct?
That was correct.
All right. That brings us to seven. Changing the term of the mayor from two years to three years. Ordinance. I would take, you know, is there any discussion?
You wanna have some discussion?
We can. You're welcome to have all you want, Holly. This is, might know, this is the Hudson.
It's the Hudson.
Hudson, this is, yeah, the Hudson proclamation, whatever we call it.
It was my suggestion.
And it was suggested be an odd number, that, that the mayor's position would be a three-year term to rotate from side to side so you're not going after the same side of the, the wards at the same, all the time, the right or left side, you know, because you guys are staggered every two years, but.
Put such on the same deal too.
Every other time.
We can decide. Yeah, yeah. All right. So any questions, any, any thought? Okay.
Makes sense.
I'd take the first, I'd accept the first reading, uh, a motion for the first reading, please.
Move that bill number two three seven seven be given its first reading, and then it's retired. Right.
Now, first and second, Mr. Magley, so go ahead, and that's it. He's doing this on.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, all opposed? Not Sidney, if you'd like.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Centaria, Missouri, changing the term of the mayor from two years to three years and providing for submission to the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on November third, twenty twenty. Whereas the mayor for the city is elected every two years to serve a two-year term. And whereas the city is authorized under section seventy-nine dot oh five oh R S M O to set the length of the mayor's term to two, three, or four years. And whereas the proposed city term change cannot be uneffective until approved by the voters at a municipal, county, or state general primary or special election. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Centaria, Missouri, as follows. Section one, pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of section seventy-nine dot oh five oh R S M O, the term of the mayor may be set by the approval of the majority of the voters to a term of two, three, or four years. Section two, this question shall be submitted to the qualified voters of Centaria, Missouri, for their approval as required by the provisions of section seventy-nine dot oh five oh R S M O at the general election hereby called and to be held in the city on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty. The ballot of submissions shall contain substantially the following language. Shall the term of the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri be changed from a two-year term to a three-year term? Yes, box, no box. If you are in favor of the question, place an X in the box opposite of yes. If you are opposed to the question, place an X in the box opposite, no. Section three, within ten days after the approval of this ordinance by the qualified voters of Centaria, Missouri, the city clerk shall forward to the Boone County Clerk's Office by United States Registered Mail or Certified Mail a certified copy of this ordinance together with certifications of the election results and accompanied by a map of the city clearly showing the boundaries thereof. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of passage and approval.
I just gotta say, that was quite an impressive reading of the ordinance. Thank you for that, Sidney.
Move that bill number two three seven seven be given its second reading.
So, all in favor, the second from Rogers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Impress us against it.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Centaria, Missouri, changing the term of the mayor from two years to three years and providing for submission of the proposals to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on November third, twenty twenty. Whereas the mayor for the city is elected every two years to serve a two-year term. And whereas the city is authorized under section seventy-nine dot oh five oh R S M O to set the length of the mayor's term to two, three, or four years. And whereas the proposed city term change cannot become effective until approved by the voters at a municipal, county, or state general primary or special election. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Centaria, Missouri, as follows. Section one, pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of section seventy-nine dot oh five oh R S M O, the term of the mayor may be set by approval of the majority of voters to a term of two, three, or four years. Section two, this question shall be submitted to the qualified voters of Centaria, Missouri, for their approval as required by the provisions of section seventy-nine dot oh five oh R S M O at the general election hereby called and to be held in the city on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty. The ballot of submissions shall contain substantially the following language. Shall the term of the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri be changed from a two-year term to a three-year term? Yes, box, no box. If you are in favor of the question, place an X in the box opposite, yes. If you're opposed to the question, place an X in the box opposite, no. Section three, within ten days after the approval of this ordinance by the qualified voters of Centaria, Missouri, the city clerk shall forward to the Boone County Clerk's Office by United States Registered Mail or Certified Mail a certified copy of this ordinance together with certifications of the election returns and accompanied by a map of the city clearly showing the boundaries thereof. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Equally impressive.
Move that bill number two three seven seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Now, first and second, Mr. Rogers, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Tara, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Okay, bill number two three seven seven passes, be the ordinance number three zero seven.
Three zero seven three.
Okay. That brings us down to permits and licensing. It says we have none. Is that still correct?
Correct.
Brings us down to de-purchasing. Do we have anything on purchasing?
No.
Brings us now to old business. Is there any old business at this time? Now, brings us down to new business, uh, mayor appointments. I don't have any, do I?
No.
But I will have it. Okay. I had it on there. I don't want it on there.
It's just.
Okay. It's part of the template I did. Okay. B, city administrator. Go ahead.
Another report is in the packet. I've been working on the Talis implementation. This is July report, so to be honest, I don't remember everything I did in July. I have to refer to that report to remember everything to talk about. Uh, one thing that I did that I thought was very helpful was I held budget meetings, quarterly budget meetings with each of the department heads. We went through their budget. Um, most of them are being twenty-five percent into the year. Under twenty-five percent or right at twenty-five percent of expected expenses. Revenues are tracking nicely as well. Um, so we are fully studied, really. So they're doing a really good job.
Anything else? That's it? Uh, that moves us to our city attorney. Sidney, you got anything for us?
I think you guys were aware, we did not have municipal court today. It was canceled at the direction of Judge Merle. Um, so we will be having municipal court in September, and a new location will be in Boone County Court. So we did not get to have our last local municipal court here. But in September, we will be starting in Boone County. Um, also, I worked with the, um, well, Heather sent to me, and we worked with the rec department developing a liability waiver and release for the kids' club program through the rec center. So hopefully, my parents are still aware in the community that that is something that is open and available. We worked with the county to develop a plan, a safety plan for kids to return to kids' clubs. So, yeah, that'll be starting up and available for children in the area when school starts.
All right. That moves us to Tara, the city clerk. Go ahead.
There's, right now I have four of us that are attending the M N L conference that's being held in September. Um, just a reminder, it is virtual, it's one ninety-nine dollars, so if any of you do want to attend that, please look in the online directory.
How long are the resources available? Is it, if you don't watch it at that time, it's gone, or you got like two weeks you can watch it?
I think it's in.
I think you just.
I, I think so, because it's on an app now, and just.
That would be something I wouldn't mind watching. You know, I'd be watching in the evenings here and there. A couple nights a week, go through some of the stuff.
A lot of, a lot is very educational and very relevant, I was.
I'm always impressed by them. They do a good job.
So there's flexibility of watching it, and it's not just that we, you know, I'm here.
I don't think it's indefinitely, but, um.
Right.
We still have, like, the February and then a legislative conference on the app, so.
I had a couple of weeks where I can just pick through it. I, I would, I would wanna do it.
Okay.
We'll check into that, find out what, what that availability would be with the, the pay.
Because it was beginning of the month, right?
September fourteenth or fourteen, fifteenth, and sixteenth, or something like that.
I gotta bring some vacations in early.
I was sitting at your computer to say to burn, I said, okay.
I already have a vacation planned with my wife for twenty-fifth, so.
Aww.
Not sure what we're doing here.
Can't wait, please. Can't do anything when you get here, so.
Our original plans are canceled, so we're trying to figure out where.
Let's coordinate ourselves. That brings us down, that was all Tara, you had for us, okay. That means, as may arise, uh, what we do have under, as may arise, is a discussion regarding nuisance abatement at number four, Kellogg Drive. That's where all the cats are, and the problem is, and, uh, we've had quite a, I've had many complaints. This has been law for many years. Uh, you're all very aware of this. You've been on the board at all, and you all, all have been. You have, Christina, but this is, goes back, uh, double-digit years.
Just good.
Well.
I know where Kellogg Drive is.
Picture, picture that.
You'll be able to stay in the station for the longest time.
The situation.
If you pass Kellogg and look down the street, you know where it's at.
Right, right.
So, um.
Go ahead.
So the most recent situation has come about because of complaints for people in the neighborhood. It is now being considered a public health nuisance. And I had several conversations with the county health department, the state health department, uh, the communicable disease department with the state health department. And we have come to the conclusion that it is our, is our responsibility as the city to take care of this nuisance. And none of those agencies can help. They didn't offer, you know, maybe some guidance, some routes to take. So we met, uh, Mike and Chris and I met with the Steve's Pest Control rep last Thursday. The complaint is about mosquitoes at this point because they're breeding apparently in some, possibly in some koi ponds in the backyard. So we couldn't see them. You couldn't, you can't get to them at all because there's so much vegetation grown up. You can't even hardly see the fence. And I did not walk in the, I stayed in the road. I was supervising from the street. Because I'm worried snakes. But they went out, they were getting bitten instantly, and I was getting bitten just standing in the street by these mosquitoes.
As you all know, I like to wear shorts. Somebody asked me to, did some men wear shorts? I said, this one does. Bottom line is, I was there fifteen, twenty minutes on the perimeter of the house.
Had some new pictures.
And my legs were eight up.
Yeah.
Oh. So, so we entered into an agreement with Steve's Pest Control to spray the outside so that'll kill the existing already.
It'll help.
Hatched mosquitoes.
Right.
But he can't get into the backyard. So we went over with a bucket trap to see if we could, uh, look over the house to find the, a way to get into the backyard, that we could cut a path, a simple path to get in the backyard.
No, they have for years.
A lot of cats.
There's a lot of cats.
Records.
The owner does visit the place pretty good, and feeds animals, so.
She feeds animals all the time.
It's not like it's a bandit. She's creating more of a nuisance.
Yeah.
And fair cats, or all kinds of problems.
So have you found the koi pond?
No.
No. You can't find it.
You can't find it. So whenever you look over the back of it, you cannot see.
When I was standing beside the pest control guy between, uh, the, the house on the south, and yet, he immediately said, I'm not putting one of my guys in that backyard on the back to spray. We will only be able to pervert or spray. He goes, this is the worst I've ever seen it, where you won't even treat it without just, you know. And so he put that in his report, and so. report and so forth, and we talked about cutting through the fence, the city did with their backyard machine, that we, I don't think that's the thing for us to do at all, I, I don't believe, there's so much sumac and poison ivy in there, it's unbelievable. And we risk, you know what you're gonna get into, there's a wooden fence, you've got to get through, once you, you gotta cut through it to get to find these ponds. The property is, and we had a, we had the engineer go by, and he couldn't get inside because we didn't have the ability to do that without having a warrant, a warrant, a warrant to go inside, but he said he didn't need to go inside, he said it was absolutely condemnable with what he witnessed, and then as you look at the arrow pictures, there are three open holes in the roof where there had been venting that had been open for years now, you cannot get to the front door, if you looked at any of these pictures, did you send those out to anybody? These pictures are unbelievable, you cannot get the front door. She has now put a mailbox, she still gets mail there, she's putting a mailbox in the driveway on a, on a, on a crate or something, and you now can't get around the right side. Donnie and I took a visit over there one time before, about a year ago, and you could get up to the side, you can't even get through the backside now, and.
The light stays on out front because it's too dark, it can't acknowledge it's day or night with the foliage, and this is out by the street.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's, it's unreal, and it's, everyone in that subdivision, rightfully so, has come, has complained to me.
We all been the bigger.
No, no, but, yeah.
What's her stuff now?
Has she been contacted? Can she be fined for?
We.
She's in municipal court right now, so there is a nuisance ticket that's active and that will likely remain active through this. Just for everybody's identification on history, this was actually a property that was taken and condemned, and then this action was taken all the way up to Boone County Court a number of years ago, I want to say almost ten years ago.
Nine years ago, what's all of the name?
I mean, okay, nine years. And nothing was done after you all received a judgment condemning the property.
Where we could have toured now.
Back then, so we can't revive that, that's too old, that's basically stale at this point, so we have to bring it back to the administrative abatement process, which is where you all would act as the judges in the case, you would hear the evidence, I would present the evidence on behalf of the city, you would hear from witnesses, she would have the ability to have an attorney present, cross-examine those witnesses, I mean, it's very much like a court proceeding, and it is treated as such. We have a court reporter here who takes down all the testimony, ultimately, after you hear all the evidence, which is why I would really prefer you guys not prejudge that, obviously now. You know, once you hear all the evidence, you guys will make a decision and render it, and then the hearing officer, which needs to be a neutral, somebody that has a law degree that hears it max as a judge, so you'll have to find somebody that can act as your hearing officer, will write up an order, and that order will be whatever you all decide.
So what do we got to do to do this?
We need to get, we need to make sure that your engineer is available, because that is obviously a key witness for the city. We have to make a court reporter available, we need to find a time when you all can sit and probably give an hour, maybe two of your time to listen to evidence and hear what is said on all the sides, and, you know, we need to find a hearing officer that can act as a hearing officer in order to oversee your administrative abatement hearings.
Or you're gonna have the health department testify.
We can have, we can have a number of people, I don't, I don't know yet if we have the health department, because I don't know if the health, has the health department actually been out there now?
No, and whenever I contacted them, they said it was the city's jurisdiction, they would not come out.
So I can only call anybody that's got direct knowledge, and generally that'll be, there'll be some city staff.
Health officer for the city anymore?
Huh? Yeah, but we have some city staff that have been out there and have seen it, they'll be able to testify, your city engineer will be able to testify to the condition of the physical structure, so they'll have some witnesses, so that's what we have to do, we just need to set a date, we need to give her, under the code, we need to give her, we're, we're looking at it at minimum thirty days.
We need to do this, I mean, I don't care.
They're in Florida.
We owe it to these people who live around there.
Well, it should have been taken care of by years ago.
I, I can tell you, I have personal knowledge of complaints going back over twenty years.
Yeah.
Well, I, whenever we were looking at, since we did set an administrative hearing date, and then she started doing things and taking out permits for like demolition, those kinds of things, and then COVID hit, it was right about the same time, and then it kind of stopped because of everything else, so but now.
There's always been kind of a, when it gets down to the last minute or the last straw, there's some action and activity that starts.
Yeah.
Which is not anywhere near enough.
Like she called me today, she received my letter because I had to give her notice that we were doing this, and she did call me today and said she.
No, I mean, I would just, I would ask you that, I mean, I, I just would, you know, you guys will be the hearing officer or the, the judges, so I would just ask you to please not prejudge, I don't want to give out too much information.
We need to keep.
I, I think that what we should do at this point is decide to have the administrative hearing.
Yeah.
And set the date for thirty days as soon as possible.
So if I need to contact the engineer and I can contact a court reporter, it might be easiest to find out the dates that the engineer is available, send them out to you all, and then you all let me know what dates you're available.
This will be in the evening, or?
I mean, whichever works with your schedule.
Work to do this?
No, we would like to be able to work with your all's schedules.
Are there days that do not work? Because I don't want to give the engineer a possible date, like a, like a Wednesday may not work for most people, or a Tuesday or Thursday, so are there any days of the week that do not work for you?
Some, some people zoom in, I don't be.
Yeah, absolutely, you guys, you guys.
I mean, not us, I want to be here, but I don't want to keep delaying this because one person can't make it.
Well, no, but if a Board of Alderman person has, you know, the capability, you're at home, for whatever reason, you can zoom in and watch the evidence and listen to it, we can record the evidence as well, like, so we have a, a video recorder up there that can be recorded and played back for the older persons to review after the hearing. However, you will have to come together though, just like we are now, and vote and make a decision on your order.
I'm talking about all the other people that need to be here.
Witnesses, you mean, and stuff like that?
Witnesses.
Because I don't want them to have to be.
I want to be honest, I mean, the answer is yes, it can be done, I have done a preliminary hearing with a witness on Zoom. It's a little, it should be yes, it can be done, the answer is yes.
I would, I, I honestly would prefer that we all be able to be here.
Well, yeah.
You know, that we work it out, where all seven of us, of us can be here, and then coordinate that with the people that we need outside of this group, and that Heather have the opportunity to go ahead and proceed with figuring out when that would be, and they give us a date, and see if that works, does that make sense? And it could be, it'd be a weeknight date, is what it'd be, so I mean, is there a date, a day of the week that's better for anybody other than?
It doesn't matter to me, as long as on this deal.
It's gotta be after six-thirty.
Six-thirties.
And I have some. And I have some suggestions for your hearing officer, there's a couple of options that come to mind, Jose Caldera practices now with Harper Evans Wade and Nettamire, he used to be a city attorney with the city of Columbia, he's now in private practice, you have Randall Thompson, who used to actually act as your city attorney, he was a city attorney, I think for Mowbray still, but don't hold me to that, but I believe he still is, he may be able to act as your hearing officer, so those would be two ideas that you all would have to consider.
Can I ask you a question? Can we have more than one hearing? I mean, if we've got three or four people, I mean.
It's just like a trial, you have, or think of yourself as a jury, right? The older persons are the jury, so you guys all have to be present in hearing the evidence at any time.
I mean, you have court sometimes, you have more than one case, I mean.
Yeah.
Could we have two or three of these people that we've had problems with?
Yeah, you guys can schedule more than one.
I mean, we're here, I'm just saying, I think it'll send a message. If, if, based upon the evidence and what gets ruled upon by the, the legal counsel, the judge or person taking the judgment.
Well, you, you guys, you guys will vote, and then ultimately it'll be up to the hearing officer in conjunction with the mayor, because they're the ultimate, where the name sits, that's right. He or she or whoever you hire in that capacity will assist you in drafting that order.
Point being, we, we have somebody that's gonna have to come here.
Right.
She got travel time.
So you're saying there's more than one house?
We have two or three that we could do pretty easily.
Six right now.
And I'm aware that there's quite a few.
We don't want to overload it, but my point is.
Yeah, let's knock them out.
If we knock some out, it may help us, may help people understand that we are going to enforce the ordinances, and if that doesn't mean in the, if it's easier for us to enforce what we need to do for our town to have the ordinances enforced properly and to the level that they should be to maintain other people's property and rights, then we, we can take that in-house and do it with this administrative hearing. My point is, we're gonna have resources that we're gonna call in, the private amendment, whatever, it's gonna cost us some money for these resources, so the bottom line is, I would like for us to get together and hear three at least that night, and then we, when judgments get happening, it tells us whether we're on task or what we think, how we're looking at things or not as a group, but also if we are, it sends a message, I think, that we are going to proceed with cleaning up these areas and these things that are detrimental to our city and our citizens. So.
And just note that, I mean, if even, you know, once you issue an order, you have to wait so many days.
Sure.
And then they have the opportunity to appeal it directly to Boone County Circuit Court if they don't agree with your all's judgment or order, or whatever it might be, if it's, you know, against them, and then you go, you go from there, so.
Yeah, I was.
Otherwise, if you guys, let's, let's say, hypothetically, you find that a property is a nuisance and needs to be immediately abated, just understand the city has a very, I mean, if you find, make that finding and that time for appeal passes, the city has to immediately act to, you know, to negate that, that nuisance. So if that means tearing it down or demolishing it, or whatever, I just want to make sure you understand there could be some immediate costs also behind these, if you're thinking about doing a lot of these at once, I know the city has some resources, whatever picture.
So, so the question is, if we were to take action and, and, and rule something, what if the person decided, well, I can take care of this, I can sell the property, I can do this, and I can bring you a contract, and I can?
I think that's what happened nine years ago on this one, I'll be quite frank, just from what I was looking through.
Well, the problem, you'd have to have a contract, you'd have to see it closed, if not, we've still reserved the right to.
Correct, if, if.
We just didn't follow through, the city did not follow through nine years ago.
Correct, that was correct.
That's what happened. We got a ruling in Boone County to eliminate this situation, this nuisance, and we didn't do anything with it. It's not gonna happen.
And the cost for the demolition can be places, will be places in the property.
What's the ballpark figure, what a court would cost, it's just on one, one, this one residence, just roughly, bringing in all the?
You mean like, you mean like if it went to?
Do we have to pay the, all?
Well, I mean, usually your hearing officer bills by the hour, they're an attorney, so they're gonna bill by the hours, is what I have seen in the past, so I'm gonna, you know, you're gonna look at a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty dollars an hour, maybe a little bit more for your hearing officer, because they're, they're like a judge and they have experience in this area, and you're probably looking at anywhere from, you know, maybe an hour a hearing.
Five hundred to a thousand.
And then you've got the court reporter who has to transcribe the transcripts, and there's a cost there.
Travel time, is there a cost for that?
That's, that's between, I don't know what that.
I understand, I understand.
I don't know how they would do that.
You're contracting their services, so.
Oh, and James Owen, I forgot, but James Owen is also another attorney that could be somebody that could start James.
Do we have to vote on that, to approve that?
I think that what would happen is, is once you guys set a date, myself and Heather can work to get that information, see if any of those gentlemen are available, what their cost would be, and we can bring it to your next general government meeting or wherever else.
Well, we're not, we're gonna, we'll probably have a special meeting.
We don't need loopholes.
Well, so, I'm telling everybody now, we're probably gonna have a special meeting on this one, because we're talking about, I don't want to wait another thirty days, I want us to, to try to align this the next week, this coming, this week sometime, get us definitely set for a date, and, but just throw the dates out, make sure everybody can be here, and then us come back and have a special meeting.
Well, what happens if they don't show up to?
The, it's a default judgment, I still have to present evidence on behalf of the city, you're, it's, I'm sorry if I bore you, but it'll be me up there talking and questioning your witness and getting exhibits and evidence in, and we'll make a record based on the witness's testimony, and if that person doesn't want to present evidence or say anything, then you will only have whatever that's in front of you, you didn't make a decision on it.
So, so if they default, if they don't show up, basically?
That would be a fair assessment, assuming.
I'm just.
Assuming that, yeah, assuming that the evidence that I present on behalf of the city shows that they're a nuisance.
Not a default, it's still, it's good.
Right, but it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you been longer there?
No, I just.
I just. I saw the topic.
So that's, we're okay then, with, let's move forward, that.
Don't get up, don't get up.
Does everybody agree that I think I don't want to wait thirty days to, to, to say, let's send out a notice for thirty days?
They're going on for it. Schedule, okay?
Okay.
So we can get together, we'll regimine that.
You can, I said that because the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth of September, that would